We express our unity and support of President Zelensky, the democratically elected government and the people of Ukraine. And call on the UK government and its NATO allies to offer the maximum humanitarian aid and support of the Ukrainian government and people. Brockston Borough Council are ready to step up to help refugees who have fled their homes. Commissioner Carr.
Thank you for that, Mr Mayor. We thought when it was January the first, 2022 came, that this could be a better year than 2020 and 2021. But over the last week, that has disappeared. What we're seeing in Ukraine now, and in Kyiv and Kharkiv, and all the other large cities, is an absolute disgrace in the 21st century, knowing what happened in the 20th century. And our hearts go out to the people of Ukraine. Three weeks ago, Barbara and myself were actually on holiday in Egypt, and there were Ukrainians in our hotel who were partying and drinking, sitting by the pool. Three weeks later, where are those people now? What are they doing? Are they below the surface hiding? Are they fighting? We don't know. It is absolutely dreadful situation. I will be speaking to the chief executive about starting to set up a register of interest for any people in the borough who would be willing to take a refugee family into their home. Because I understand that the government are proposing a sponsored refugee programme. So we'll be talking about that urgently to try and kickstart that going so that we're ahead of the game, should we're called upon to assist. I'll also be asking the chief executive to write to the Ukrainian ambassador to offer our condolences and our support. And to the starved Mishkoff, our twin city, who are only three and a half hours away from the Ukrainian border. And if, I'm asking them if there's anything we can help because their estimate now is there'll be two and a half million refugees in Poland alone. That's not including Hungary or Slovakia or Romania. So if we can do anything to help our friends in Mishkoff, we should be willing to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does anyone else want to say anything? Oh, sorry. Greg?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm standing to, you know, give full, wholehearted support to the statement that you've just read out, Mr Mayor. Anybody who knows their 20th century history knows that this geography in particular is, has already suffered the greatest loss of life in modern times, anywhere in the world, in terms of conflict. And the tragedy that the people of this part of the world have had to bear is almost incomprehensible to other parts of the world and indeed other parts of Western Europe. And here we are faced with the spectre of imperialism in the guise of Vladimir Putin, which must be wholeheartedly condemned as imperialism should be condemned anywhere in the world. And it is only that invading a sovereign nation and indeed returning this part of the world to war, which they thought they'd put behind them for decades and decades and decades. We must wholeheartedly condemn what we do, and this statement is an excellent statement in that we will be offering and putting Brockston in a position to offer our full support where and where we can. We should also expect our government, our national government, to do everything that they can in terms of offering sanctuary to refugees fleeing conflict. And we should continue to remember that there is a role that this government should play in doing that. So I support the statement wholeheartedly and would love to, you know, see an end to this conflict as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Land.
Thank you, Mayor. We remember the people of Ukraine, but let's not forget the people in other areas of Eastern Europe who will also be fearing for their livelihoods and their wellbeing. My own colleague on my team is Lithuanian, and her family members in Lithuania have been told to prepare for worse things. Whether that will come to fruition or not, who knows? But these are times to be concerned and worried, and we should absolutely be offering welcome and refuge to anyone seeking sanctuary from these atrocities. Thank you. I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Guindal.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the previous speakers have said quite a lot, which is actually everyone I'm sure will agree. But practically, I'm wondering, Mr Mayor, what we can do as a whole borough. Obviously, Ukraine are crying out for things for young children. An awful lot of young children have come out, come on buses from the border. So is there a way that we can finance or we can get the whole borough involved and send over a vehicle? Or put the things like nappies, all the stuff we would like to send, then it could go into someone else's lorry that's doing the same thing? I don't want to waste money, but I would like to see this happen if it's possible. I don't know about the financial side of it because we need to speak to legal. And of course, our chief executive will know exactly what to do, but I'd like us to do something practical. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, I support exactly what's being said in your statement. This is an appalling act of naked aggression on a sovereign nation. And, Mr Mayor, I'm calling on the British government to waive visa requirements and to provide sanctuary to any refugees from Ukraine. I did hear a report this morning that we're currently charging fees for visas for people from Ukraine. That seems to be morally wrong and utterly indefensible. I hope that we can restore this country's reputation for being somewhere that was hospitable, welcoming for those in need. And this is a perfect opportunity to do so in the face of appalling aggression from Russia. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Yeah, there's already a convoy of goods gone from Chirwell School today, collected by the Polish church, I understand. So they want clothes and tinned food, that's what they asked for there. And people are always very willing to contribute stuff like that. What we need is somewhere to store it. I think that's always the problem, storing it and sorting it all out. I just wanted to say that, you know, the innocent people in here always suffer. And there's not a clear division between people of Russia and people of Ukraine. When I was learning Russian at college, it was a Ukrainian man who used to help me because I wasn't very good at it. Because they're linked, and there were families who've got members from Russia and Ukraine in them. So it's not a cut and dried war. Nobody's in favour of it, and we should support everybody and not consider that all the Russians are the aggressors because it's not true. I don't think anybody really wants this war. Thank you.
Commissioner Callaghan.
I just want to support everything everybody else is saying, but also I would just want to hear everybody saying like about sending things. At the City Hospital, the Q M C, they've put a box there, they're collecting donations. And Professor Jim Thornton made a WhatsApp group. So we've got a WhatsApp group and added lots of people, and a lot of people are collecting donations and taking it to the City Hospital and the Queen's. So you can, I mean, that's what, there's a Ukraine doctor there who they're supporting and they're gonna take the money or send it and do what they know. Because money will help them in many ways, where we can't send lorries and stuff, that money can be helped to children and other needs. So there is boxes there to collect donations if somebody wants to collect a donation and take it to the City or the Queen's.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Absolutely support your statement. I'm very grateful that you made that statement today and support the further actions that the deputy leader talked about. Concrete things we can actually do as a council. It strikes me there's a lot of grassroots, ground-up collections and other things going on at the moment. We ought to be signposting people towards that rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. I think there's a lot of goodwill out there to make contributions and do that work. I've got some Ukrainian history in my family, actually, which I found out not too long ago. And one of the things that's quite chilling, actually, is it's Jewish Ukrainian history. And trying to research something that isn't all that long ago is impossible because not only were communities wiped out by the Nazis in the 40s, but so were records, so were cemeteries, so were whole towns. And actually, there's a town which you just can't find out anything about because it no longer exists. So to hear Putin's pretext as going in to Ukraine to de-Nazify it, especially given that the president of the Ukraine is a third generation from a family which lost all but one person, his grandfather, in Holocaust. I mean, he's just absolutely abhorrent. We should be doing everything that we can. I'm pleased that we are as a council, and we'll be right behind anything the council can do.
Thank you. Commissioner Patrick.
Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, this council has always been very welcoming to refugees. If you remember, some years ago, we had a unanimous vote that we would welcome them. And we have had, I think, very successfully Syrians and now we have Afghan refugees. And I would hope that this, I don't know how long, you know, people want to return to their home. But I do, would like to ask the council to consider whether we could, in fact, put some people into our council houses. I know it is not straightforward, I know it is complicated, but it does seem to me a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think most people in the room actually understand the sentiment, but I've got a friend who's got family out there. And in real life, I just want to read some of the messages that were coming through, just to bring it home and how real it was. We were due to meet online the other evening, and obviously we got the messages saying, sorry, but we're obviously very much engaged and urgently trying to contact and get our family out of Ukraine right now. And the messages were going through, support. And the next message that came through was, thank you, my daughter and partner at the Ukraine Embassy in London today. Luckily, they made this appointment last week. The next message after, lots of thoughts, but we know that the male members of the family will be unable to leave now. It's the women and children we need to get here. We have had one fatality confirmed so far. Another cousin was put on a bus to Poland, but her phone has gone dead. Her last message was saying that her battery was low, so we were waiting for the news. She was 15. The rest of the family is in the basement of their apartment building, which has been turned into a bomb shelter. They can't move as they're currently surrounded by troops. We do have one bit of good news, in that Edna has made it home to the UK. She has Covid but is otherwise safe and well. We've had a phone call from the family sheltering. They are still okay, as okay as they can be. Still no word from the evacuated cousin, but delays mean it could be a while yet. And then the good news last night was, we've just had word from Svetlana, she's made it to Poland safely. The 15-year-old, her bus broke down and she had to walk over 200 kilometres to the border.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else want to say anything? Is that, okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this March meeting. It's the budget meeting tonight, so please keep your comments relevant and to the point, and of course, always keep it friendly and be respectful to other people's opinions. Since we were here just before Christmas, a lot has been going on. Firstly, the school's food bank appeal and Brockston Youth Homelessness food collection point here in the council offices were a great success. And I'm pleased that with a collective team effort, we managed to help a good number of people across the borough. We marked Holocaust Memorial Day in Randwick Park's World Garden with the help of the amazing students from Oldham White School. And if you haven't seen that yet, the video is on YouTube, and it's worth watching just to hear the kids singing, it was amazing. We launched the Beeston Light Night at the end of January, which was an amazing event. And again, very well attended and enjoyed by many. And last month, I had the pleasure of meeting two work experience students in the offices and giving them an insight into what we do here day by day. It was a valuable learning for them, and I enjoyed it very much. We also organised a charity night at Oliver's Pub and Kitchen in Eastwood. And with the help of Mark Preston and his team, we raised over £3,000, all of which goes to Brockston Youth Homelessness. Okay. In between all of this, in conjunction with Tim Crawford's team and two local schools, we have planted 14 trees in two parks in Stapford and Eastwood as part of the Queen's Green Canopy for her Jubilee Year. And looking forward, the civic team are starting to organise a community thank you celebration evening at the end of April at the Ark Cinema in Beeston, and I'm hoping to do another charity bike ride before I finish my time as mayor. And finally, before we get down to business, I would like to conclude my announcement tonight with a minute silence for Colin Slater, MBE, a Beeston resident and a freeman of the borough who sadly passed away in January. Colin will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by us all. Dr Peter Robinson, Chair of the Remuneration Panel, sends his condolences. And if anyone would like to say a few words, Colin, before we start the minute silence, please do so. Who's that? Yeah. No, it was that. Did you not say anything?
We did the two silence first.
Yeah, we was gonna have a minute silence, yeah, for Colin, yeah. So if you can all join us for a minute silence. Thank you. Thank you. Did you want to say something, Commissioner Carr?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to express my condolences to the family and friends of Colin Slater. Colin was a constituent of mine and Barbara's, who I've known very well for a number of years, mainly because he was usually complaining about the vegetation from Derby Road coming through to the back of his garden. But he was a gentleman, he really was. Also mentioned as a Nottingham Forest fan, I express my sympathies to Notts County fans because he was revered by Notts County fans. His dedication to that team, his BBC commentaries are legendary, especially the pronunciation of the word goal, which always used to title me when he said it. And he is and will be missed by everybody, but I know particularly from a lot of my friends who are Notts County fans that they feel the loss very deeply indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So next item on the Thank you, everybody. So next item on the agenda is, I lost it, I've done that. Right, pay award and reviews of allowances. This is a reference from the Independent Remuneration Panel's review of the pay award and review of allowances. Do we have a proposer?
I'll propose that.
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, and would you like to speak?
Yeah, we have before as the the annual allowances, the Independent Remuneration Panel have met. And if you look under uh references five point one on the second page, their recommendation to full council is that there should be a two percent increase in members' allowances as an increased cost of approximately five thousand six hundred nineteen per year. Um the other information that you have there with regards to um uh other allowances is an indication for what it likely to be uh when we move to the new cabinet system. However, though it has been some changes to that since these papers were printed and there will likely be some more changes to that before the papers, uh the final allowances are uh announced and voted on. Um so at this stage, Mr Chair, what we're voting on tonight is uh I propose that we increase in line with the remuneration panel by two percent. The allowances for the new cabinet structure will come to the A G M in May for for a final approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um does anyone want to speak on this one? This hasn't come back to its board to some more. Throws me out if I don't go buy me thing, yeah. All those in favour? Okay, let's carry it then. It's unanimous. Thank you. Six, item six is the pay policy. This is to seek council approval for the pay policy statement for twenty two to twenty three. Do we have a proposer?
I propose that.
And a seconder?
Second up, Chair.
I guess it's over to you, Councillor Carr, again.
Again, this is the, this is the annual policy pay statement which sets out our policies regards to uh staff, et cetera. And I think most of it speaks for itself, but if anybody's got any questions, then please feel free to ask them.
Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask? Okay, all those in favour?
Okay, unanimous.
Unanimous, that's passed. Thank you, everybody. Okay, item seven is the civic event Freeman and Alderman of the Borough. This is to consider a request to hold a Freeman and Alderman ceremony later this year. Do we have a proposer?
I propose that.
Okay.
Second up, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Carr.
Yeah, as we come up to the end of uh administration, Mr Mayor, we always have a uh 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 an event where we appoint Alderman and Freeman to the Borough. And again, this is uh that such, it's come to that time already, time flies, doesn't it? And in the uh the report, it actually sets out the timeline. Uh I understand that nominations can be made now. Um I'm not quite sure who to, but I'm sure something will be sent out to uh members pretty shortly. And this is really to approve that we have this event and also to approve a budget which you'll see within the papers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And does anyone want to speak on this at all? Okay, all those in favour?
It's unanimous.
Not been done for eight o'clock. Item eight, this is an urgent item, the Chatwin and Toten and Chilwell Neighbourhood Forum redesignation. Um before we move to the budget, we will consider this urgent item, which I haven't give, I have given my permission to be heard this evening. And this has been circulated to councillors by posting email. I hope you've all seen that. Uh this relates to the redesignation of Toten and Chilwell Neighbourhood Forum. Do we have a proposer?
I'll propose that.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Carr?
Uh I think the report speaks for itself. Unfortunately, I think we have a couple of uh neighbourhood forums whose designation has dropped and uh Chatwin have re-applied for designation which is outlined in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. They've done a lot of hard work, haven't they? Does anyone want to speak on this at all? Oh, councillor Skinner.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to support this. I've been a member of the forum for five years and um not just me, but the other people have spent um days and days of each week working on this for five years and and just because, you know, H S two is not happening and all of that, it doesn't mean that all the good work for the environment, industry, infrastructure and everything that we want to see in the area is going to just be abandoned. We want to carry on and get a good place for us.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on that? Councillor Carey?
I just want to rise in support of 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 the forum and the really good work that that they've done. Obviously, the five year limit has been reached because of very strange circumstances and I think they really do deserve to get the extra period of time to make sure that hard work is implemented as best it can. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, okay, so, does anyone else?
We'd really have to reply to that. I just acknowledge that this neighbourhood forum has done exceptional work. And it made, actually made our lives very easy when we were looking at the Toten master plan. Uh and being able to to work with them, uh uh as I say, makes things smoother. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you. That's everybody. Okay, so to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimous, I guess. Wow, okay. Is this next item gonna be as quick? Item number nine, before we move on to the budget, I would like to remind members that in accordance with local authorities' regulations twenty fourteen, any votes on this item will be recorded. Do we have a proposer?
Proposer?
Seconder?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Carr?
Thank you. Mr Mayor, honour guests, fellow councillor, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to present to you tonight the twenty twenty two twenty three budget. Before I start, I am sure you want to join me in wishing our leader, councillor Minarun Uvich, a speedy and full recovery. I did speak to him today. He had a good day yesterday, but has not been so good today, but I understand it's uh two steps forward and one step back, but he is recovering. I want to offer my sincerest thanks and gratitude to all the staff, residents, businesses who have worked tirelessly through the pandemic. Once again, we have really seen the best of Brockstone. Of course, we also have to offer our gratitude to our public sector colleagues in the N H S, police, ambulance and fire services, and not forgetting those that work in shops, drive buses and trains as well. Next year's budget continues to focus on providing a wide range of services to our communities and also securing our post-Covid economic, community and health recovery. And without any cuts or reductions in our services. Our economic growth and investment strategy, cost housing, regeneration and business growth, we're vital for our financial sustainability and improving our residents' lives. In preparing this budget, I have been ably assisted and supported by councillor Greg Marshall, the Chair of Finance and Resources Committee, and the Deputy Chief Executive, along with fellow councillors from the Labour Group, Liberal Democrat Group and independent members, to whom I express my thanks from the start and that the other members of the Finance and Resources Committee. Unfortunately, the government's fair funding review, which originally suggested the move towards seventy five percent business rate retention, has again been delayed. And therefore, it is not possible at this stage to profile what, if any, impact this may have upon the council. However, it would appear that priority in any redistribution exercise will go to those authorities with social care responsibilities. The current fifty percent business rate retention will therefore continue in twenty twenty two, twenty three, with the government's fair funding review for local government to commence during spring twenty twenty two. But Richard, we won't hold our breath, will we? Members will be aware that the funding of our council services are reliant on income from council tax, business rates and fees and charges, as well as increased commercial activity. We have made proven estimates of income from business rates and assumed that any increase will be in line with the best information about the operation of the business rate pool and allowed for modest growth in future years. For the first time, our level of new home bonus will be significantly greater than for previous year. In twenty one, twenty two, we received just under twenty thousand pound, whereas we'll receive over three three hundred and fifty thousand pounds in twenty two, twenty three. It is expected that the future of the new homes bonus scheme after twenty two, twenty three will be considered as part of the upcoming fair fair funding review this spring. This administration is proposing a small increase in Brockstone's element on council tax, which would see a five pound annual increase per bandee property, taking it from seventy one hundred and seventy one pound eighty five to one hundred and seventy six pounds eighty five in twenty twenty two, twenty three. Mr Bear, tonight I will highlight how this very modest increase will support vital local services, provide value for money, build up our tax base and importantly, continue to support our post-pandemic economic, community and health recovery. We are also recommending a four point one percent increase in housing rent and garage rent so that more money can be invested back into our housing stock. Members will note from this year's budget consultation that our services received high level of resident satisfaction, seventy six percent compared with seventy three percent last year. Of people were satisfied or very satisfied with the area which they live, while sixty five percent uh up one percent are satisfied or very satisfied with the way that the council delivers services. This administration is proposing to continue its ambitious post-pandemic economic recovery strategy, including sustainable investment and growth, and we will continue to provide significant capital investment in our existing housing stock based on the previous stock condition survey and when it and when it's complete. The new asset management strategy. Sorry, I got that wrong, sorry. Also, progressing well, and we will aim to deliver in the region of two hundred and fifty affordable homes over the next decade. Like me, I'm sure we'll have seen the great news, the veterans accommodation on Oakfield Road, Stapford is very near completion. Moving on to another very important corporate priority, business growth. I want to remind members that this administration is committed to economic regeneration and improvements across all our full town centres. And as always, we will do our best to capitalise on the investment across our borough, including the submission of round two levelling up bids for both Eastwood and Kimberley. As the implications of the recent announced white paper on levelling up and devolution are further understood, they will be reported to future council and I'll change that cabinet meetings because we won't have committees. In Beeston, following the opening of our new cinema and leisure development, we will be looking forward to the economic benefits of increased footfall and the development of a night time economy. In Stapford, I'm delighted that the first project on our successful town centre fund, twenty one point one million, has commenced. The Town Centre Recovery Fund, and that will be submitting our final cases to the government for the other five projects during the spring, with projects commencing commencing in the summer. Both the executive board and the stakeholder group is working well and we have secured representation from all tiers of local government and the private sector. In relation to Eastwood and Kimberley, members of the two respective task and finish groups, including Borough and Town councillors, are developing our levelling up funding bids for submission to government. I'm also pleased to report that the construction of the new industrial units at Mushroom Farm, funded by the L E P and the council, was completed successfully and are fully let. May I take this opportunity to say I'm particularly proud of our finance team for the rapid disbursements of business grants and reliefs to businesses across Brockstone. They're very, very, they worked very, very hard indeed, as as councillor Marshall myself can testify, being in the same meetings as them. Our team is currently working on the hundred and fifty pound council tax rebate for bound A to D properties and the disbursement of the latest round of business grant, quite an achievement on top of the council tax and business rate billing. Mr Mayor, even in these challenging financial times, this administration will continue investment in our vital local services to residents and businesses across the borough. I think it is worth reminding members of some of the key investments that will make a significant difference to our communities and residents. Our budget proposals include continued investments in parks and open spaces and includes approval of permanent new markets officer. Very importantly, we have continued our support to community voluntary groups, including the C A B, who support a range of mental health and housing initiatives for both the improvement of mental health of staff and residents and to support those in peril of homelessness. In terms of our environmental goals, we are continuing to support our exciting green futures campaign to tackle climate change and reduce our carbon emissions to net zero by twenty twenty seven. And progress will be reported through the, well, it won't, through cabinet and other committees. As in previous years, we will provide continued support for people with disabilities through the disabled facility grant scheme, totaling nearly seven hundred and ninety seven thousand eight hundred and fifty pounds in twenty two, twenty three. Also, I am delighted to announce that we have set aside a one of ten thousand pound budget to fund a variety of events in celebration of the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Mr Bear, I want to reaffirm that this budget recommends no confulsions, redundancies or reductions to our frontline services. As a result of our funding position and important investment plans, we anticipate drawing three hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and seventy one pounds from our general reserves, which is approximately half last year's takeout balances, a great achievement in the current climate. In order to manage unforeseen risks, we are always looking to protect our prudent general reserves. And I am pleased to report that as of the first of April twenty one, our gen- our general reserve actually totaled six point eight million pounds. Utilising our general reserves is always disappointing, but we'll be working to achieve a balanced budget over the lifetime of medium term financial strategy and will always retain a prudent level of balances. As always, we will continue to look for new and improved ways of managing the council's businesses, seek opportunities for economies and efficiencies and seize opportunities for investment to generate more income for the future. Mr Bear, we were all pleased to hear about the government's easing of Covid restrictions and can look forward to the opening of the new food and beverage operators at our cinema and leisure developments in Beeston. Some of me may have seen that two of them have announced dates for opening just today. Excuse me. Uh a welcome affordable house building programme, significant investment from the Stapford Fund deal, the Green Futures Programme and a successful outcome for our two levelling up bids. I would like to place on record my sincere thanks to members and officers alike for the constructive way in which they have approached this budget. Matters that have been taken into account within the budget have been set out in your reports to the various committees at the council. All of the committees have had the opportunity to scrutinise their respective budget papers and reviewed the business plans of their respective departments. This is a progressive, robust and sustainable budget and I have no hesitation in proposing that the recommendations that the Finance and Resources Committee be accepted by the council this evening. Mr Mayor, the council tax resolution within the council paper and accordingly I move the resolution as set out item eight on the agenda. Thank you.
Uh thank you. Um councillor, anyone like to speak on that? Oh, sorry, need someone to second it first. Sorry.
I'll second that, Chair. I thought I, I thought I.
Oh, you've done it again now. See, you've double seconded it. Does anyone want to speak on that? Councillor Marshall?
Yeah, thank you. Um thank you, Chair. Um I'm I'm incredibly pleased to to second uh the statement from councillor Steve Carr. Um and 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 again underline uh and it and reiterate the the um thanks really to the diligence, uh the hard work, the effort and the duty of officers at Brockstone Council, particularly in the finance department which I um chair the committee of. They have worked incredibly hard through some of the most testing times in local government that we can remember and have consistently performed at the very highest level in comparison with any authority at any tier around discharging particularly the grants, but discharging their other duties as well. And I'd like to place on record my thanks to the entire department for their help in delivering that. Councillor Carr, of course, mentioned that we should be incredibly proud of this budget because it is another no cuts to services and no cuts to jobs budget, which was the envy of councils up and down the land. And it is only because of the approach that we've taken, whether it's innovative or progressive or planned or in conjunction with officers, it is only because of those things that we're able to deliver a budget which protects services, protects the jobs and values public service, puts Brockstow authority at the heart of the community here and the safety net that that provides to people in our communities. What it isn't down to, it isn't thanks to the Tory government. And we continually say this, we must continually say this. Perhaps the one off payments from the Covid grants are welcome, of course. It is only a sticking plaster to the continual gross underfunding of local government that we've seen year upon year across 11 years of austerity and any attempts before. And what that shows us, of course, is that we can do things differently here under this administration. We can do things to buffer those hardest impacts that other councils haven't been able to do. And we can say that it is Brockstow that is defending the services that they hold dearly. But don't be under any illusion that there will be continued attacks on local government. There will be continued attacks on funding. They are avowed small state party who don't want the safety net of local authorities, who don't want the services that we can provide, and we must be the opposition to that. We must be the voice that says that's wrong, and we must be the defenders of what we want to try and do when it comes to financing and allowing everything that's good about what we do to be distributed amongst our communities. So I support the statement as moved by Deputy Leader and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. In a previous budget speech, one of my colleagues described plans of the Controlling Coalition as similar to those of Mr. MacOrber, that something will always turn up. Well, in this case it did, but unfortunately it was Covid. However, the very generous Conservative government presented the Borough Council with an initial £820,000 to be added to general fund balances for Covid grants received to support the council's administration services during the pandemic. This, together with 1.2 million extra in business rates and over £300,000 in new homes bonus, means the council had a very good financial year. However, the medium term forecast is still dire. This year's good news has only postponed the inevitable. The forecast balances falling below the medium reserves level during the time of the next administration. This council still needs an effective plan to balance the budget. Sticking with the Mr. MacOrber approach is just not an acceptable option. And because of this, no long term plan, I cannot vote to support this budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Councillor Jackson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and let me start by agreeing with councillor Carr and wishing councillor Dillavich well. If he's up to taking phone calls, I'll plague him tomorrow if he answers. I can't support this budget, Mr. Mayor. Yet again, it is a council with its head in the sand over the structural problems in finances over the medium term. You've been fortunate this year with additional cash from central government despite what councillor Marshall said, new homes bonus, lots of Covid grants which have come in, and not least £350,000 which you've taken from reserves yet again. And you said it towards the end of your budget statement to councillor Carr that it was a robust budget and it would be balanced over the term of the medium term financial strategy. There's absolutely nothing in it that tells us how you're going to do that. In normal times, you're spending about a million pounds more than you're bringing in, and that's clearly not sustainable, as Paul said. You'll be below the level, the minimum level of balances very soon if you carry on like that. You simply can't carry on doing it. I would be quite happy to support a budget that actually mapped out how you were going to get to that position over the next few years. This does nothing of the sort, and it worries me where we'll be in a couple of years' time, and we're not going to keep on getting. You've ridden your luck for several years, and you're not going to keep on getting these windfalls from central government, not least because of the pressures within adult social care and within the children, which affect other councils. And I think when we're looking at the fairer funding review, which is coming down the line, it's highly likely that any additional funding will go to councils that are engaged in those services. So I don't think you can rely on that as a way to balance the books. And I don't think you can rely on further wind force from central government either over the next few years. So it's disappointing that we've got the budget that we have. Disappointing there's no detail of the budget actually in the papers at all, and you have to go off and find it to read any of it. I hope everyone has done that. So, Mr. Mayor, disappointingly, I won't be supporting your budget tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Councillor Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to pick a specific part of the budget, I suppose, and that is the fact that we made such a massive thing out of the climate change and the climate emergency, which I think everybody supports the fact that we've got issues that we need to move forward with, which I will say at this present time with what's happening in Ukraine and Russia don't perhaps feel quite as pressing as a few weeks or a week or so ago even. But there's a lot of things said that this would be done in seven years or by 2027. And yet, just one of the items on this budget, bearing in mind from what I'm hearing, you've had something like, I don't know, 1.3, 1.4 million pounds that you possibly weren't thinking you were going to have. The replacement plant, which is always is an interesting one because the biggest problem we've got with this 2027 green strategy and carbon neutrality is the fleet of vehicles we've got. And there's been no real effort at this point to do anything about that. So we've heard the comments about heads being buried in sand, and that definitely seems to be the situation here. I don't see where we're going. I mean, 2021, 2022, you had 756,000 going towards renewal of plant, et cetera. This time we've got 637,000, about £120,000 less. New refuse lorries, electric refuse lorries are now feasible, they're £500,000. I'm not saying they're cheap. The reality is, you made a commitment to the people of Brockstow. You made this big thing about 2027, and now me and a little bit of rhetoric, we're doing our best. Well, this ain't our best, is it? Because if this was our best, we would be using some of that money to introduce more vehicles, more electric vehicles. And beyond that, I mean.
There is a point of order, isn't there? Yeah. Shouldn't councillor Wilson be standing if he's addressing you?
Well, you're not.
If it causes you a major problem, I don't mind standing. If that helps, is that even what I'm saying? Does that make what I'm saying more tolerable?
No, you're still talking rubbish, but at least you are now doing it properly.
Yes, he's polite as ever. Very, very nice of you. Is this a behaviour you expect? Do you think we could have an apology for that? An apology for that? What? For your attitude and your comments? Or is this a professional manner in which you lead this council? Anyway, so to move on, so from my understanding is you pretty much charge the most you can with this increase. Well, we've got situations, haven't we now? I mean, I know this Russia incident, I mean, I do a little bit of farming and a bit of farming. Two thirds of the nitrogen, the fertiliser, comes from Russia. So food prices are going to go up. Quarter of the grain, corn, et cetera, comes from Ukraine and Russia. Bread prices, things like that, the cereals, that sort of thing are going to go up. Gas prices have gone up, fuel prices have gone up. So we know this is all rising. So I would have thought, because I hear words like, words from over there that we're doing the best, and it's all about the people of Brockstow. The best thing you could have done probably is put a few pounds back in the pocket by not putting this raising and having it done that way. So I'm afraid I won't be able to support this budget either, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Councillor Owen? Well, you have gathered, Mr. Mayor, that certainly on this side of the chamber, we are not proposing to support this budget, and it should come as no surprise. Yet again, we've heard that it's all the government's fault that the council tax is going to go up. But let's remind ourselves, councillor Simpson has already said this, but I think it's worth repeating what this council has received from this Conservative government. £820,000, which it could use to offset the council tax increase. It's had an extra £333,000 in new homes bonus, which it could use to offset the council tax increase. It's had a one off services grant of £199,000, which it could use to offset the council tax increase. The council tax increase will raise simply £174,000. And we're told in the speech that was made at the beginning that this is small, it's modest. As I understand it, it's the maximum amount that you're allowed to take. Whether it's small or modest or not, if it's small or modest, it's thanks to this Conservative government that puts a cap on you being able to put it up anymore without going to a referendum. What you are in effect is a bunch of modern day Fagins. You're going to, you're going to pick a pocket or two. Well, unfortunately, you're going to pick the pocket of every council taxpayer in this borough. If only it were a pocket or two, I wouldn't be so worried. But every council taxpayer is going to have this, is going to have their pocket picked by this controlling, well, they're not really in control, are they? This coalition, this coalition that tries to run this council. And we're told that it's got to, it's got to be like this because it's protecting services that are the envy, that was the word, wasn't it? The envy of every other council. Every other council is envious of our services. Now, let's just look at one or two of these. I haven't got time to go through them all. One or two of these services. At the last Housing Committee meeting, we were told about the housing repairs service. Over half, over half were dissatisfied with it. So humiliating a report was it, it couldn't be discussed in public. It had to go as an excluded item to stop the public and press actually getting to know about it. That's a service that is the envy of every other council. Only the other day, I had an email from a resident, a constituent of mine, talking about services generally, who said he tried to go online to pay the fee for his green bin to be emptied, and he couldn't do it. So I don't know why he was worried about it, because even if he'd have paid it, it probably wouldn't have been emptied anyway, such is the service as it has been up to now. He tried to complain, but of course, I didn't interrupt anybody else that was speaking. I'd be grateful if you didn't interrupt me. He tried to complain, but of course, as we know, this council has invented a simple but brilliant way of dealing with complaints. It doesn't answer the telephone. Simple but brilliant. I'm surprised it hasn't come into a local government journal because it's so good, isn't it? If you're lucky, or perhaps unlucky, you get a bit of an answer phone message in an American accent. I don't know whether you've all come across that. It's an American accent, and you think, oh my goodness, am I ringing the Oval Office? It's like that. But I can tell you this, you're more likely to get Joe Biden to answer the telephone than you are anybody in our planning department, such is the service that is the envy of every other council. And what's the reward for these services? Well, our tenants are going to have their council house rents put up by 4.1%. Our council taxpayers are going to have to pay the maximum increase that is allowed. This council, Mr. Mayor, is sinking faster than the Titanic. Councillor Simpson's already demonstrated that, and I've noted that a fair number of officers are taking to the lifeboats. This group that hangs together is in office but not in control. It's certainly not in control of our finances. It's not in control of service delivery. All it seeks to do is to remain in office and blame the government for everything. Well, it won't do. They've been rumbled them, they've been rumbled. We'll ensure that next year, the electorate of Brockstow also rumble them because they should not be let anywhere near the council finances or the council services on the record that they have for these past three years. Of course, we shall vote against the budget. We wouldn't do anything else. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Skinner?
Yeah, thank you. I hope councillor Owen told his resident that he doesn't have to pay for the green bin anyway, so no wonder he was having trouble with doing that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? Councillor Robinson?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Owen has referred to us on this side as a bunch of Fagins. I've been called much worse than that, so not too worried about that. And he also says that they're not going to support the budget, but that's fine. But there's always one question, and I've been on this council since 1991. And whenever we've been in power, this is the question that the Tories have always failed to answer. And you said that we've got no detailed plan, so where is your detailed alternative strategy?
Good question.
Anyone else got any questions or? Councillor Kerry?
Thank you, and I'll call you Mr. Mayor rather than the Chair.
Eva O'Rourke? Councillor Marshall?
I'd just like to add additional points really about housing and it's very, very poor performance. It's interesting that in the papers that we're presented with today, numbers are picked out that says, oh, we've improved from 76% to 73%. I would just like to ask the deputy leader to remind the people that are watching today, if any, if any, how the performance has improved since the Conservative administration, which ended three years ago. It's awful compared to how it used to be. Residents can't get through and get repairs done, the repair satisfaction is abysmal. Councillor Owen already alluded to that. And I totally agree with the issue about rent. All you ever do in Labour is the government are charging more, the government are doing this, et cetera, et cetera. You are putting rents up by the extra 1%. You don't need to do that. You absolutely don't need to do that. The HR is in fine fettle. You could really help the lowest paid in this borough by not putting that up. I'll leave it at that. You all know how bad it is, and in fact, even so bad that I believe councillor Colin, who currently is the chairman of the Housing Committee, told me after the House Committee, she wasn't going to stand or try to be the portfolio holder in the new cabinet. And, you know, I wish her well for the work that she's done. I just wonder who else there is to follow your footsteps in what you've delivered. Councillor Colin, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Councillor Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, I can only speak as an individual councillor, and I'd just like to tell you of my experience. My experience with the planning department has been that they come back to me. We are in constant contact, they're extremely helpful, I send them things, they respond, and I have no problems whatsoever. And as for the repairs department, it is true, there have been some problems. I can only say that recently I must have had at least a dozen emails and the problem that I had. that I had, or we had, was solved. And I think there may be some general problems, but I think if you ask people round about how they find the council officers, I find them absolutely first class.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? Or we're ready to move on?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not going to repeat what everyone said, but the reality is that whilst Covid has been sad in lots of ways for all of us, it has been of benefit to the ruling group because of the additional funding you've received from government, despite what's been said by councillor Marshall. So patting yourselves on the back for the limited money you're taking from reserves is solely because that you've had that fortunate windfall, if you like, from such misfortune. But what we have to remember is, this council is here to deliver a service for the people of Brockstone. And one of the issues that's constantly been raised and has been touched on tonight by residents is one of the things that I get as a councillor all the time, is that people cannot get through to this council. There is a major problem with your telephone service, there's often a problem with anything residents need to access online, and they cannot get through to people. And that is, I don't know whether that's the fault of your system that you've got, or whether we are living in a post-Covid world where we have some people at home, some people in an office, and there isn't that communication. But something needs to happen urgently to resolve this issue, because that is what you are here to do. That is what we are elected to do, is to scrutinise, and there is a problem. And if you're in business, you would have gone bust by now, because if you were relying on a profit, people would have stopped ringing this council, because you cannot get hold of people, and things don't get done. And that's something that really does need looking into and looking into fast. And then, as I look through your speech this evening, we talk about progressive. I don't really see anything progressive in this. I don't see what's changed from three years ago. You talk about, you know, your investment into mental health, well, that's something was set up under the Conservatives, yes, it was a joint working group, but that hasn't changed, you haven't added anything to that, despite being post-Covid and the impact that's had on people's mental health. So I'm going to be voting against this tonight, but I do end this with a plea of please, get to the bottom of what your problem is with your phone lines and your online services, and deal with it. Give the residents the service that they deserve and that they are paying for, for this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else that'd like to speak? No? Okay, councillor Carr, did you want to?
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. Just replied to some of the comments and questions that people have asked. Greg, yes, it's true that we've had government money, but we've set the next to no funding to administer business grants of one-off Covid payments and the council tax refund, which are costing our departments an arm and a leg to administer, so thank you for that. Councillor Simpson, if you think our budget is so bad, where's your alternative budget? Where are your plans? Enlighten us what your plans are in the future, please, if you're going to criticise ours, because I have heard nothing from the Conservative Party tonight that has indicated to me what they would do differently, other than get rid of staff and other than cut our services. Richard Jackson, this is the £1 million black hole was something that we inherited from four years of Tory maladministration. The last few years have shown us that the Tories are absolutely terrible with money. Wasted £37 billion on track and trace. I didn't think there was such a thing as a magic money tree, but apparently there is a magic money tree when it suits the Conservative Party. And of course, the county council received far more grant than we did, yet I didn't notice you not freezing your council tax. 4%, 4%. Well, we can be on that, people will see 4% taken out extra from their wage packet, councillor Jackson. Councillor Easton tells us that we have our heads in the sand, and at the same time says that we should replace all of our refuse lorries at £500,000 each. No, no, no suggestion whatsoever of where we're going to get that money from, other than we'll have to borrow it and we'll have to incur service charges to do that. Yet again, the Tories putting ideas there without thinking it through one little bit. Well, councillor Owen, dear, your disrespect for office at this council is legendary, and you haven't done yourself any favours tonight in that regard either. And of course, 76% is a good figure for customer satisfaction. I know, I worked in a bank, I would have been very pleased with that. And you say 1% increase in council tax, but people will see that when they get their bills, that £65 per bandee property is the amount that is being added to council tax bills by the county council, and for us, it's £5. So lower in financial terms, lower in percentage terms. Councillor Robinson, well said, I should have already mentioned that, we always get this from the Conservatives, but we never actually get any alternatives from them or tell us what they do, because I think the problem, the reality is, the people in the borough wouldn't like to hear what they would do to this council. Councillor Kerry, as you very well know, the government recommends CPI plus 1%, and that is what we're doing. And we do that because George Osborne reduced rents by 1% a year for several years, and that cost our HRA account millions of pounds. And that has, and that has actually stifled our ability. No, you can't have a classification, I'm talking. I'm talking about this to me.
It can raise us a point of order. Sorry.
Can I just say that this argument about government cuts over the years, actually, what the government did when it was faced with the financial crisis from our friends across there, it had to save money, it did save money, and actually, in majority of the cases.
Many, many services remained, because actually, it made councils become much more efficient, and we should continue to have that ambition. Thank you.
So, councillor Carr? Well, thank you for that intervention, because it's just completely underlined what I've said about what the Tories would do to this council if we ever let them do it again. As I was saying before I was interrupted, it has in fact limited our long-term plans for delivery on new social housing, which we are determined to do, but with those extra billions that were lost, we could have a lot more. The Chair of Housing is nodding in agreement. Janet Patrick, thanks for your comments. Again, we should be supporting our officers, not deriding them in public, which I think is appalling. And councillor Crowe, not one person has contacted me, either as their councillor or as deputy leader, about phones, not one. And I get, between us, we probably get 25, 30 phone calls a week from residents asking about housing issues, et cetera. Nobody has contacted me about the phones. If there's a problem, the new overview and scrutiny committee can call it in, that will be fine. So we are delivering, delivering new social housing is really important to us, and we will continue to do it. And, Mr Mayor, I would say that, yet again, a disappointing response from the Conservative group, not surprised, it's the same every year, oh, you're not doing enough, you've got your head in the sands. But we have delivered for this borough, we have protected services, we've done it at minimal cost, unlike the county council, and we will continue to do that. And next year, when it is an election, we will be returned again, and the Conservatives will be kept out of office, which is the right thing for this borough, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. So we're going to go to a recorded vote now, so Ruth's going to call your names out, so if you can do your best.
I can't have a vote, so I was about to-
If you wish to vote for the resolution, please say for when I read out your name. If you wish to vote against, please say against. If you wish to abstain, please say abstain. Councillor David Bagshaw? Councillor Susan Bagshaw? Councillor Bram? Councillor Barbara Carr? Councillor Steve Carr? Councillor Crowe? Councillor Cubley? Councillor Cullen? Councillor Danheimer? Councillor Easton? Councillor Gould? Councillor Grindell? Councillor Hallam? Councillor Hannah? Councillor Jackson? Councillor Kerry? Councillor Callard? Councillor Land? Councillor McCrae? Councillor Marshall? Councillor McGrath? Councillor Jill Owen? Councillor Philip Owen? Councillor Parker? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patrick? Councillor Pringle? Councillor Robinson? Councillor Simpson? Councillor Skinner? Councillor Tideswell? Councillor Tyler? Councillor Watts? Councillor Williamson? And councillor Willemott?
Yeah, that's four, that's, yeah.
21 and 14.
Yeah, you've got it, Matthew, haven't you? Right, they've all got the same, so that's passed. That's it, that's it, there it is. Oh, sorry, 21, 4, 14 against and no abstentions, so that motion's been passed. So, thank you, everybody. What's this? It's quarter past eight, and the meeting is now closed. So, good evening, everybody.